It's six o'clock now. Okay, let's go. First item is Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You what you officially called meeting to order? I think you just said at six o'clock.
Well, that's okay. We called the meeting to order. We did the pledge allegiance, and now we're on to correspondence. Mary, do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
We do not. Okay. Yeah, other than what was passed out as a public hearing. Okay. And on consideration of the regular meeting minutes of March 25th, so would like to make a motion.
I move to accept the minutes from the special meeting Tuesday, March 25th, 2025.
Okay, we've got three of those. All right, so any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, then, consideration approval of the public hearing minutes from April 29th, 2025. So we have motion?
I move that the public hearing minutes of April 29th, 2025 be approved.
Okay, any seconds?
I'll second this one.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, there was a lot of discussion. There were a lot of, really, a lot of public comments. Are those available, any place to listen to? That's, it's all recorded. Okay, through the video. Okay. Should the minutes reflect that these comments are available on day? They don't normally?
I mean, all of our, all of our meetings get recorded. And all the meetings for all boards get recorded and are available.
Okay.
So. Okay, that, any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed or abstained? Thank you. Okay, so Chief McAllister requested that we get together and talk about the provisions of the Fire Commission. And so we can open up with him and then go to the other chief here too? Okay, good.
He was smart enough to hide in the back row.
All right, great.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for accepting the request to transfer the discussion to the speaker tonight. What we really needed to do was we were having our monthly meeting, and it was the following night we had a chance to discuss it. Subsequently, that took place, as well as an officer's meeting, where it was discussed in detail. So we'll get right to the point here. In terms of our, I don't want to say it's our condition, but the discussion and the direction in which it went. And we're going to give you a couple of different concepts on how we've reviewed the Fire Commission and how effective we've been. And I would just like to start, so that's now in front of me. That, um, I don't stand up here and just, someone is just making generalized comments on it. My experience in the fire service has been extensive. I have one of my degrees in fire science. I've been a chief in six different departments. I've been a firefighter for about 55 years. I have a career volunteering institutional fire service backgrounds. In addition to that, I have extensive background also in government. I currently serve on the city council, the city of Danbury, where I'm going for a new budget vote tonight, which I'm not looking forward to. So with that being said, the first thing I'd like to bring up is we did not support the establishment. I'll bring that right up first. And if we were to support it, one of the things that we would, we would really like to see is that the members be elected, not appointed. We feel that the general population, the voting population of any town is best served if someone is elected. And so that was a subject of discussion. Also, the third thing that we looked at was the executive members. As proposed in the charter revision, and first of all, I also like to say, I understand how much work you've done on this. This is not an easy job, and we all understand that, and we thank you for that work. The executive members would be, one representative from each fire company would get a vote. Now, if it was chosen not to give that person a vote, one of the things that we would like to see is that if you failed to have a quorum or someone absent, that the executive member would fill that slot and automatically get a vote for that particular meeting. And that way, if it was not a quorum, the meeting could still be held, and something could be accomplished. Right? The other aspect of it is the responsibilities of people on a full-fledged fire division. All of you have received, it's a 28-page document on the work that you did on different changes in the proposed charter revision, the commission changes. And the two items, or item A and item B, and the fire service change, references the establishment of a full fire division based on state statute. Right? As a past president of the Connecticut State Firefighters Association, I can tell you that that particular responsibility is quite in-depth. And I would just give you some examples of that, that, um, once you establish one of those state-based operations, the municipality itself assumes all the liability that comes down the pipe related to anything that comes out of the fire service. And one thing in particular would be lawsuits, maybe for the negligent operations of the fire department or an individual member of the fire department. And there's no way to get around that. It would hit the commission first. It wouldn't hit the fire issues first. But maybe I'm wrong. It's not a bad idea from my standpoint, but I don't think it's fair. Remember, the fire company was responsible, or the department as a whole, I think we should start with the fire company and whole self of ourselves. But in the case of establishment, the fire commission, go to the commission first. And if you have people on that commission that are members of the general public and as proposed, not have any fire service background, I don't know how fair that is. You're gonna have people who come on there with really no fire service background because of what we stripped that. And to have them subjected to that type of situation is kind of difficult. So the discussions of that, with people at the stable, were the aspect of how long would it take to bring people up to speed? And it was discussed a couple of years. I think it's going to be more than a couple of years. And I'm just going to give you a reference to that right now. This is the book State of Connecticut publishes on Fire Service Law. Right, from first page to last page, there's 598 pages in there. So I don't know how anybody, if they studied it very hard, would be able to absorb all the stuff that's in there, all the references, all the responsibilities, without having some type of in-depth knowledge of the fire service in general. The other aspect of it, very quickly, I'll review these things, is you'll be responsible in negotiation of mutual aid agreements. And just stop to talk about that for a second. Remember, if you go on mutual aid, when you have an assigned agreement surrounding the town, which a lot of these towns around here do, we have, is that the same, if there was an incident in that mutual aid town, and you were an active participant, you would also be subject to any liability that comes out of that. And again, it would come back to the commission. So just keep that on the back burner for a few seconds. The other aspect of it, there would be management of benefits. There would be the responsibilities of the commission. If there were any paid employees, things such as benefits and promotions would come under the purview of the commission itself. And then the other big thing is that the fire departments in the town of Bethel, as you know, we run the EMS operations as well. We already have an EMS commission in place that, you know, is attempting to establish some type of report guidelines to fire companies. Now we would have a full fire commission, and we already have a full EMS commission. We'd be the only organization in town, organization, sorry, that would be subject to two different commissions establishing regulations over our operation. Nobody else has that. And we're all volunteers. Um, in addition to that, the, uh, the other aspects of it, it's just some general concepts and duties of a full-fledged state-chartered fire commission based on, I'm just going to make reference to the 10 fire commissions that I picked around the state of Connecticut that are somewhat similar in size and scope as Bethel. Some of the things they would be responsible for would be management suspension, budget finance, policies and regulations, equipment and facilities, training, and along with the training is discipline, you know, regarding participation, training, any other aspect of disciplinary actions that take place in the fire company. When it comes to a fire commission, perhaps, again, that would take a little heat off the fire chiefs, but still, I don't know how fair it would be for someone who's coming as a civilian out of the background. And in addition to that, there might be the determination qualifications for officers and how that would be established. The water system. Under the state statute, there's references to the use of hydrants, even though there's like a water commission, et cetera. Use of hydrants for a fire protection does come under the purview for the fire commission when it is being used for a fire-related activity. And then, um, the aspect of entering into large contracts, the purchase of equipment, whether it's a piece of fire wrap brass or it's a couple of holes or holes, obviously would come under the fire protection as well. And as you just realized, as fast as we bought a ladder truck, that approached $200,000. Again, having someone that doesn't have the fire service background, coming as a civilian, dealing with something like that, something that's large, as important as that, and you see the developments taking place. I mean, Route 6 in Stoney Hill, it's like the Sunrise Highway in Long Island. It's just getting bigger and bigger every day. And thank God, we have a ladder truck over here to address that and back up what we have downtown. Now we'll get back to it with our ladder truck over across town. And if it was a necessary purchase, if it was a large, complicated, detailed, and it's sometimes very contentious purchase, but it had to take place. So with that being said, I'm going to refer to some of the other members of the fire company here tonight and let them speak. And I thank you for the opportunity to make a personal statement.
Thank you.
And any questions? I'm sorry.
Why don't we wait till we hear from everyone, because they may clarify something. Yeah, so go ahead and introduce whoever's going to speak next.
I'm Brendan Ryan, 17 Reservoir Street. I'm the Deputy Fire Chief for the Fire Department as well. I don't come to it with nearly the experience that this gentleman does. I have 15 years currently with the department. I have 43 years with my current employer. I work retail during the day. My job in retail is to work out efficiencies, to question and push back on things, as much of what I do almost every day in my career. And that's kind of what I'm bringing to this question is that, you know, when the topic of the Fire Commission came up at our monthly meeting again, I was like, kind of like, we're still talking about this, and I get it, and I understand where the genesis of it came from, and I get all that. But we're still beating it, and I just, I don't understand what the outcome will look, what's the question we're trying to solve? What's the problem? Because we've already got two commissions that overview our budget pretty rigorously. So you're adding another dimension to it, which I don't know whether or not that's worth it or not. Given the current Fire Commission, which we've had in place, they have six, as I understand, six provisos that they had had on the charter, of which that can only account for three that they do on any regular notification. So there has been no catalog of any of our equipment, which is part of their charge. Part of their charge is also to long-term budgeting process for our apparatus replacement, which hasn't been accomplished. And now there is another, oh, emergency vehicle. That was the genesis of how this whole thing started, was keeping up with maintenance records. That just recently happened. So these are three major things, that we've got a Fire Commission already in place, it's already family. And this is the other side, that this is again where I have an issue with appointed members. We have appointed members on this Fire Commission, and I don't want to bring it up or speak out of turn, but we had an appointed chairperson on this member who was an active member in our department, who actually ran against the City Chief. That's why I have a problem with appointed members being on any commission in town, because I think that's a huge conflict of interest. I mean, I know I'm a pretty easygoing person. I try to be amiable, and I try to listen to every side of every argument, but I got to be honest with you. Somebody can kick my can in an election, I think I still might hold up much. And I don't know how you don't. The other side of it is, I think what you could do is oppose it, because if I just stayed up here and just complained about having a Fire Commission, I don't know that it'd bring any value to this conversation. However, I think a full-time person, a full-time admin position, to monitor the bills of both departments would give you the oversight you're looking for without creating a whole other form of commission. And Bill spoke to it eloquently, because again, I think we had a great opportunity here in the very beginning. You guys are doing a lot of work. I appreciate all the work you put into this. It's huge undertaking. But we already have an EMS commission. I think it was an excellent opportunity to merge those, because my department doesn't operate in two different silos. My department operates as a fire and EMS company, not just one thing. We do both of those. I can tell you, I was up to you about this morning, on a call this morning, so I can guarantee you we do both. And that's, I really do think that that's an opportunity that we probably should have looked at. But I really do believe that a clerical position, it could monitor both departments, incoming and outgoing bills, is just the oversight you're looking for without overreach. And it's also something, as Bill illustrated well, I believe, there's an awful lot of responsibility that will come back to the town. I'm not necessarily 100% sure that they're prepared for. And I really think that a relook at this and maybe a little bit more input on both sides would probably benefit the commission and the amount of information you have written. Because I truly believe that there should always be oversight of the big family, making sure that everybody accounts for things. But I think there's also a point, it almost gets too much. Basically, all I have.
And Chief, do you have someone, you've got someone else to speak as well?
I, I think it might be appropriate to establish to chairman that maybe we just introduce the officers here.
Okay.
So first, I'd like to start with Keith Avanuskas here from Stoney Hill. Assistant Chief Matt Gutters here, past chief in Stoney Hill, who we know as our Fire Marshal Tom Galliford. And Will Nokavik is the President of the Fire Company. Pat Morgan is the Chief of the Fire Police here in town. He's also in charge of all Irish activities. That's a terrible name, I'll be careful. All right. Brendan's wife, who is chairman of our membership committee, and Keel Clark, who has been heading our EMS, well, all of our EMS operations, I know, for many years, and still continues to do that. And Glenn Delpup is, started out, he's a success story with the fire department. Started out as an administrative member and liked what he saw, and he jumped out of the administrative chair and to see the back of the fire truck, that is firefighter one. Glenn is a longtime, currently retired employee of IBM, and he became a great asset. Glenn is the one responsible for inputting all of our fire reports. And I can tell you, because, you know, I sit down on a regular basis now, he's pretty much by himself. And he's a big job. He spends one full day a week just moving that on a volunteer basis. And our captain of our EMS division down there, Devin Quirk. Devin always sits next to the door, he's a firefighter one, but not pretty sure of the reason there might be an ambulance going. So I think we've got pretty much everybody covered. And Malcolm Levy is my daytime, I have to say, left-hand man, because he's out there every day, just about every day. And Malcolm, last year here in Danube, was our top fire responder. Last year, Malcolm won 865 awards. So I'll turn it over to anybody who wants to speak.
Just one more thing.
Sure.
I apologize. It just occurred to me. I was sitting here, and I was thinking, and then you started introducing people that, you know, we've had a lot of new members. It's been, it's been a good story to tell. A lot of that's my counterparts, my wife's interjection into the department. But the good part of it is the attitude and the candor of each of the departments. I think people are coming to see volunteering again, which is, it's a story not a lot of people can tell in other parts of the country. Volunteerism is down everywhere else. We're at the point where we're stuffed with lobster, with rock, rockers right now. We're running out of space. That's a great story to tell. I would hate for anything to come along, because, and you know, Bill alluded to the two-year period of time where, you know, people would have to burn in to learn the job, basically. I would hate for things to decay, so within two years, this a lot can happen. I mean, everybody here pretty much went through the COVID years. I can tell you, we were down to 34 members that were active. And some more less. We're up over 80, 90 in some departments, some of this. We're in a healthy spot. Would I like more absolute? But I think that's my biggest concern. I don't want us to rest. I'm afraid that's what's going to happen, because anytime we get heavy-handed oversight, people start to say that, oh, well, maybe he's not really in charge, I'll just go here or there. It worries me, because I am not going to be here forever. I love this place, and I love volunteering in town. But my days are numbered. You know, it's, the younger guys here, it's time to come up behind me and start taking over. I want to leave in a better place than I found it. That's all I have to say. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. And Chief McAllister, do you have someone else?
I don't have anyone else. And we discussed this, both our general leaders, officers being, if it was open to any other member of the fire company would like to speak. I think it would be maybe appropriate to hear from, you know, anything you say from that.
So Chief?
I don't know how many of this time.
Okay.
Melanie Ryan, 17 Reservoir Street. I'm the membership director for Bethel Bonter Fire Department. My question would be, for all of you here, to go from one side to the other. So there is a Fire Commission now that exists, not a full-blown Fire Commission. So do you need one? Is there now, today, a reason to have a Fire Commission at all? Or should it just be dissolved? And if you have one, what do you want it to do? Because you don't want to tie the hands of the fire department and not have it able to function, obviously. So you guys were the fire department, what would you want? You know, you don't want to have your son, your daughter, joining the fire department and saying, oh, well, there's so much oversight. You want it to be a balance, or if you don't need a Fire Commission, you don't have a Fire Commission. You don't want to necessarily commit to a Fire Commission or not. You have the option to go both ways. So that would be my comment.
Tom Gall if one be one, right? So I'm not, I'm not really representing Bethel Bonter Fire Department or Stoney Hill. As you know, I suppose it's a public hearing. I helped, actually helped write the current ordinance that's in place when Matt Nickramacher was here because of things that were happening. So I'm in favor of some type of Fire Commission. When I was hired 20 years ago as the Fire Marshal, this little bump was I was going to be the super chief. You know, that it was going to be an admin chief along as a Fire Marshal for that, which I still support to this day, whether it's me or not, I don't care. But I think there definitely needs to be something of an admin sort of position. However, I did send something to Mr. Beagle and to Al, as long as those are the emails I had, kind of outlining a little bit better what I was kind of come up with as far as the work, right? So the Fire Commission already exists, right? It already exists as an ordinance. And I think putting it in the charter now is just kind of codifying it and having, making it, I guess, more official. That's kind of the way I'm kind of seeing how this works, right? And so that ordinance has very specific things that the Fire Commission would do, and most of that has to do with budgeting. It doesn't give them the authority to write policies and procedures, or to tell, you know, the chiefs who can drive which vehicle or whatever. So there is actually a plan. They just developed a plan, a 10-year capital plan that includes large purchases for the department and apparatus replacements. So they actually did that. So they actually, it took them a couple of years to kind of figure it out, but they actually did that plan, which is, I think, great for the town of Bethel and for the two fire departments to have kind of a long-term plan of what we have to replace, because fire apparatus is not cheap. Tires, whatever larger vehicle line is not cheap. So we have to have that on the table. So they've done some work. It's been a little slow, but the Fire Commission has done some work over the last couple of years. So it's really just kind of holding their feet to the fire of what their charges, I think, is important. Or it's the board of selectmen that does that, whoever. So my concern really with speaking at the public hearing was just the wording of who makes up Fire Commission, right? And the wording is, each of whom shall not serve the town of Bethel as a current firefighter. And like I said, I think there's a lot of confusion in that. Both fire companies have very different qualifications of who's active, who's not. You know, the example was given here of some members that are currently on and that are members of the fire company. So, yeah, like I said in that, I don't know if you sent that information to everyone on the.
Frankly, I haven't noticed that you had only sent it to the two of us. So we will distribute it with the rest. And I, and we're, we did hear your testimony and really zeroed in on that whole thing of the vagueness of saying,
Right.
Um, I was thinking that it said active, but what does it say? Current firefighter. So I think that needs to be defined more.
Yeah. So I mean, again, these are just three options I came up with, just kind of, you know, figuring out how we're going to make this work. So maybe it's something to say like, each of whom shall not have served or currently served the town of Bethel as a fire department member. So that kind of eliminates anybody, right? Whether you're just an EMS member, you're just a fire member. So is that a good way to do it or not? I don't know. I'm just trying to help fuel the conversation. So anyone that was or is a member of the fire department at any time can be on it. Now, will that eliminate people that could be on it or should be on it, you know, that were past members? You know, Chief Ryan retires, he gives up the fire department, he's out enough, but in a few years, maybe he wants to serve it because he's got a lot of experience. He can't be on it. So is that good or not? I don't know. I don't know the answer. So the second option is maybe someone who hasn't been active for a certain amount of time, five years. You haven't been active at all in the fire service in Bethel for five years. Frank, you're currently not active. You can be on the commission as long as you don't, you don't act. And the third option is, out of the five members, make two of them, one from each department, that they appoint or they elect, however each company wants to do it, to serve on that commission as a voting member. So there's always one member from each fire department serving on there out of the five that has a voice and a vote in the process. Whoever those other three are, you know, currently, they bend people who have experience in the fire service, right? Not in Bethel, but in other towns. There's a lot of firefighters that live in Bethel. There's people I know that want to be on the commission and that haven't been appointed on the commission, that serve in other towns and have great experience in that. So, you know, you'll always have three people at least that are, I want to say civilians, residents that, you know, are every day. Or maybe have some experience, whether or not that's how we appoint them. But maybe that's that third option is to put a member of each fire company on there that have a vote. And it's only two out of, you know, not the majority, two out of the five. Because I, the commission, I think, is here to stay. I think if it doesn't go through the charter, I think it's still, is an ordinance, it's still there. And maybe we just need to hold our feet to fire them and keep them doing what they're doing. I'm not versed, as well versed as Chief McAllister in what all the rules and regulations of the state statutes are, so I can't speak on that. A little lightning. You know, maybe we should see exactly how that all falls out, but the response will really be a true fire mission.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address a couple of things that Tom brought up, and obviously Tom has known a lot of this. The current Fire Commission, as Chief Ryan pointed out, has six specific items that they were assigned to address, primarily financial. And as Brendan points it out, you know, three to six of it have really been addressed on a regular basis. So this ring just went to the back burner for God knows what reason. And, but when you, the way this is written, and you know, again, part A and part B, it refers to full statutory authority based on state statute, right? That, when you assign that to a commission, which is basically what all fire, full fire commissions do, is it's based on state statute. This is, this is the Bible that they use. It's not something that you could just say, okay, we're only going to do this, and we're not going to do this. That assignment of those responsibilities don't allow that. You have to assume the full responsibilities that. I just picked on a couple of different things. Such as mutual aid agreements, purchasing of abrass, things like that. But there's so many other things that pop up on a regular basis. And I can tell you, one of the biggest ones that I experienced is personnel-related issues. You know, I've averaged one personnel-related issue since I was chief. It's not easy. I'm volunteer. And I'll tell you what I did to try to address that, is I sat down at the first elect, who did very supportive. And I told him I needed an administrative assistant. You know, I need a secretary. I gotta do something. Let's split it. Let's split it. Doug and I had talked about this too, but we don't have one. I do my own paperwork, the work. Some of these lovely ladies here in the room, some of the guys help me type stuff up and get different, uh, notices out, or trying to get the, the membership advice and everything that's taking place, or this training, meetings, subcommittees, et cetera. It's, it's very daunting. And not to have any help on that, it is, it's crazy. And last but not least, I hope you all realize that we can't not hang. All right? I don't get anything. Brendan doesn't get anything. The only thing that's made available to us, um, is available, and we're not going down next week tonight. But, um, you know, and there are a lot of leftovers from the police department or other agencies, and we get that. But, um, there's absolutely no, no money that's given to us at all. And we're working on a per call, um, type of stipend now, which I hope does achieve its goal, or coming up with something for everybody. And really, the only paid firefighter now is Tom and his assistants. And you have to have that. He thought, we need a full fire marshal. So just, you know, keeping that in mind, um, that when you get to the point where you're gonna establish a full state statute of the fire commission, there's gonna be a lot of responsibilities there. And there's gonna be a lot of work, and we need someone that has experience in that.
Okay. Well, um, at this point, then, we have thirty minutes in this room. So I'd like the, uh, commission members to kind of take it, and we may ask for your input, but at this point, we're gonna be more speaking. Oh, okay. Wait, we got another one.
Uh, Matt Ward with Two Canyon Drive. I really hadn't planned on speaking, but listening to some of the other, uh, the members here, uh, I like Brendan's idea, uh, which I never thought of, but just, you know, one administrative person to oversee. I don't know, you know, what that would be a full term, but it should probably be twenty hours, whatever it is a week. Um, whatever was needed, but, but I think, and what we discussed at our meeting last week is, when you go down the road of the, uh, a full commission and, and you cite the state statute, and that is, that's every, that's the whole ball of wax, you've gotta follow that. And I think at the very least, you probably wanna get away with, uh, putting in, you know, following, you know, following the state statute in the, if you were gonna have a commission, they could have their own parameter and decide what they need to do. And I think that's pretty much it.
Yes.
Um, I would also suggest that you guys consider a site visit to come down to the fire department and see what it is that everyone does, um, and then to understand what the current commission affects right now versus what any other version of or nothing would affect on the fire department.
I have, I have one question, take thirty seconds.
Well, yeah, I've got questions too. I think we all have questions. So, um, I just had a, wanna start with, uh, with Nick. You know, we, there is a state law that says you can't exclude town employees from serving on various boards or commissions, uh, except for land use boards. Would we, are we allowed to exclude other town employee, they're not in town employees? Or are they considered town employees?
No.
They're not.
They're not town employees.
Okay.
They're not town employees, and there's, there's no problem with excluding current people, the members of the department or something from, if you're not town employees. We carry your workers' comp. That's it.
Yeah.
We carry the liability for the departments.
And then they're, and the property tax credit.
Yeah, those are, and we'll be doing more over time.
Right.
The, uh, the, the current status is we carry workers' comp for anybody who's injured in the department. But they're not town employees.
And so just with respect, um, we had a, uh, officer at times that'll sue our companies and, uh, that dissolved, but that's how we found out we were the fact of town employees. And there was a case about it, so we're gonna look at it.
Happy to look at it.
Yeah, I mean, so that, that is a concern, because there is a state law that says.
Workers' comp. A worker's comp, in that world, you're treated like a different town employee for workers' comp. But you're not officially a town employee for any other way.
So officially, the only town employee is the fire marshal?
Yes.
Okay. So then, I mean, one possibility is in the section B, instead of making reference to the general, Connecticut general statutes, which you'll see on any other board we often do, but we could make the reference to the town ordinance. Yeah. And then that will specify very specifically what their duties are. Um, and so the other question I had was, so the ordinance was created in 2021. It's had four years. In that four-year time, have you experienced overbearing supervision? It's, is it going okay at this point?
I went before the chiefs to order a radiation detector. Uh, it's a five-hundred-dollar item. Uh, they brought it to the fire commission. It was rejected because they thought that the ambulance was gonna be for. Uh, six months later, on Reservoir Street, we had an incident where, um, surveyor with equipment that uses cesium um, got in a car accident at the corner of Nolan and Reservoir. Um, where the cases with containing cesium opened up, not a large amount, so we weren't talking about like blowing it or stuff, but we didn't have one available. Uh, so we did what we normally do, we call that a mutual aid portion of the dam break, where, um, there are two, uh, they had one that was completely broken and hadn't been fixed, and one, um, that the chief decided to unplug because it was irritating while he was driving, so the battery was dead. So that, that, we ended up having to go to, uh, the hospital, um, to have one sent out. Forty-five minutes later, they arrived. Um, and that, it wasn't a large release, um, but it would have been nice and would have been easier for me to make sure that my people are safe and everybody that's surrounding them. I don't know enough about nuclear power or energy to, to, you know, but, um, it would have been nice to know if we could create exclusionary zones, uh, with some sort of specificity. Uh, and, um, it was enough that it, it resulted in a, uh, a report being written about it. So it was enough of a release that it gives in the nuclear, maybe thirty minutes, correct? So.
The, the next meter we got that day came from a representative from the state of Connecticut. From the Department of emergency, uh, management gave down. And, uh, he was picking up, uh, sizable coalines in the season sixty-five feet in the car. And, uh, Brendan said it would have been nice to have had that meter at the time. But, uh, uh, it was tough. And just a little side note to that. Um, he was very strict with his overview of that incident. And we had a, uh, a review of it immediately thereafter, took over two hours. And we, he then said that we needed to go to the employer of this person. And we went to their place of business, which was downtown. And we found fifteen more devices just like that all piled in a room. And we picked up, uh, radiation on the front side one. So, you know, this, this is a good example.
And at this point, we got twenty minutes left before we lose the room. Um, so, so the, it's been suggested, Nick, that, um, we go to an elected board. But if there's an elected board, could we have any qualifications for being a candidate? I would think that any registered voter in Bethel is eligible to run for the position.
Yeah, you can go beyond, and beyond in terms of restrictions or prohibitions, that as long as they're consistent with state statute for an elected. If that makes sense.
So you're saying that i- if we did go the route of an elected board, we could also say you can have, you, you're required to have these qualifications or you're excluded if you're an active or current member.
Yes. So I, I would want to double-check state statute that it doesn't say that you can't in any way.
Right.
Provided that it doesn't, you can go above and beyond what the state statutes provide.
Um, so again, keeping in mind, we've got about twenty minutes. So just wanted to kinda go around the table, start with John, and we'll go around, and then, um, Dan can, can have the the final say if we, of course, he's, he's got control of the room after seven o'clock. If you want us to have more time.
I don't, I don't have anything to say.
Okay. Joan?
I, thank you for coming. I just wanted to say that, um, my father was a charter member of the Stony Hill Fire Department, Charles Garrick. So I'm very familiar with the onset of the, all the beginnings of the Stony Hill Fire Department. Uh, and again, thank you for your service. Um, a question about how to, one of the problems I see is that we have two departments and, of course, there are different characteristics of different parts of the town. And Stony Hill is now burgeoning with building four stories, two, uh, buildings with people who are questionably disabled or medically impaired, that kind of thing, big responsibility. How, how do you see that the two departments can jointly serve the people of Bethel? Um, with some kind of, um, peaceful composure, you know? I think that's what we're addressing here. We're not talking so much about your rules and regulations and your individual departments, as I understand it. It's more like, is this fair for you? Is this fair for you? You know, are you getting what you need to serve the people uh, in both sections of town and the entire town? So I don't know if anyone can address that convoluted question.
I, I'll go first.
Yeah.
Listen, uh, last year, uh, Joan, between Bethel and Stony Hill, I'm, I'm sorry, last year, um, between both fire companies, we did four thousand calls. All right? So that's a call every other hour.
Yeah.
All right? And we did it successfully, and we did it together. Right?
Yeah.
If you listen to our scanner during the day, today was a good example, way out. Like every day, we got a black with ambulance calls, most of the day today. And when one ambulance is out, the other one jumps on it. When they're both out, then the second ambulance downtown jumps on it. If it goes past that, you see if the first one's available or not, then we have to go each way. And it, it works seamlessly. And that's probably the best example, because it happens almost every day. So we did, uh, that occurred with one thousand seven hundred thirty-five ambulance calls downtown last year. And I think he did a rule of fourteen hundred in Stony Hill. So three to four thousand calls are EMS call. And, uh, we're, we're a much better place now that we've worked together on that. And I think, you know, like EMS commission other night, we're looking at some pretty serious, uh, issues on the EMS commission side that I think we're gonna work on and, and be successful. And, uh, you know, that meeting was just the other night because of the call volume. And because it's working pretty good now, I see all the success. The fireside is a different ball of wax. Um, a fire normally requires a large amount of manpower and a large amount of equipment. And I just two people and an ambulance. Although other calls we did this past weekend were serious ambulance calls. We had to run a rescue truck on it, get extra manpower, shared manpower, to keep both houses. Um, just, you know, for the better for the patient. So, um, you know, what we're doing now is all of our equipment, you know, we're knowledgeable on each, each, uh, department's equipment. We've worked together with it. And I have to tell you, the fact that we have a ladder truck on both sides of town, I, I can't tell you how happy I am about it. There's no direct route to Stony Hill. There's no direct route to Stony Hill downtown. It's a long drive.
Yeah, it is.
And, uh, especially when you're driving out of a big monster truck. And, uh, with the, the buildings out there now, my God. You know, I, I just, in conclusion, uh, I, I watch podcasts all day. It was a, a place very similar to what Maplewood was, it was on Fire in New Jersey. Um, I'd say going a year and a half ago. And most of the people there were in firms and non-analytical. And it took thirty-five minutes to get everybody out there with dogs. And they only had one ladder truck. We have two now. Hopefully, God forbid that happened. It was a sprinkler long building, um, that we could cut that time in half because we have that equipment now. And that's our goal, is to have the equipment to meet these. So there's your question. Yeah, we work well together, and it seems to continue. It's a primary, uh, goal here to get the EMS working well together, and I think it is.
Yes. Would you say then that the fire commission at this point is helping you work together?
We're, we're still, as Brendan said, three to six items are addressed on a regular basis. Um, and primarily the financial stuff. We finally just come to, uh, an agreement on the capital expenditures for the next year, next ten years. And we're able to get the ladder truck back in here for downtown. Uh, it's next year, the, it, the ladder itself, not the chassis, the ladder itself will be fifty years old.
Yeah.
Solid as a rock, but it's fifty years old. I worked in a fire department where the ladders were brand new and, but they were low-bait and they were cheap and they waved back and forth, they run up and down. And I was, uh, a third of my career I spent on ladder companies, um, with as a volunteer to create a firefighter. And we, we threw, I was lieutenant of city, or, or, we threw the ladders every night. And, um, having the ladders that we have here in town now is so much better. And it, they'll, they'll actually, you know, water, great fire department, great firefighters, but you know, when you're buying a low-bait stuff, that's not as supportive. And, and we seem to get support from the commission.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Pat, it's over.
Uh, I'm gonna make a statement, then I'm gonna, I'll just hit you with one, uh, question. I've got a few. One, you know, the research I've done and comments that have been told to me is originally this, the ordinance was derived out of some conflict and disagreement between the selectman's office and the fire departments. And that, um, ordinance was not with the blessing of the fire department, to say the least. That has then been, uh, morphed into what is now the language that we have, you know, in, in this form. So to start with, it was not derived very well. And I could see why we are where we are here today with it. Um, what you have presented today, especially if it's encumbering of all of the state statute, is far beyond anybody in this room can comprehend. And it's an incredible change to our town government. The manner in which, if you were, you can look at town government and the people that service it, the fire department is by far the largest department within the town of Bethel. And you're deserving of a say in the manner of which it goes on. Glad you're here today. So based upon the conflict that happened, and some of the things that you've mentioned, I'm gonna be quick, because there's other people. I'm just gonna pose the question to you. Do you think, Chief, that would you welcome a meeting or a or it's, it's allowed a committee or a group to meet with the selectman in the next two weeks? Do you think that if that process was to take place, that you guys can probably come to an agreement? And my thought is, the hopes of which that agreement could be presented to this commission, because I feel this topic is so wide, we could talk for a month on it. And I would recommend that the meetings of the minds come together and see if you guys can come to agreement. I mean, there is, I think there's common grounds, certainly common interest in which that can occur. Do, do you think that would be a proper way? And do you think it could probably be done in the next couple of weeks so that we can continue on with our process?
I, I think that any communication is always positive and beneficial. But if you were to make a motion, uh, to that effect, I would, uh, I would really like that somebody from your commission here also be on that committee.
I, I would, I would like to be part of it if it's proper. I don't know if, if there's a legal thing for a subcommittee of this or, you know, my individual participation.
We can weigh in at that point.
Well, well, my, you know, but that's part of my question. I, I wouldn't mind doing that if Dan was, you know, uh, willing to meet with the fire department, see if he'd hashed us out, come up with an agreement that we as a commission can accept. And so I'll leave it at that. It seemed to me that your answer is yes, you're, you would like some form of that. And maybe we can put this thing to rest.
Any, any, any communication is positive then.
I have no further questions.
Hey, Penny?
I actually don't have any questions. I just wanna say that as somebody who has, um, taken advantage of, that's maybe a good word. Needed, um, the services of both the fire department and EMS. Um, thankfully, not very often, but often enough. Um, thank you for being here. And, um, thank you for expressing your thoughts. I appreciate them. I have a lot of questions, but they're honestly within committee type of questions. So that's it, that's it for me.
Okay, Terry.
I have to agree with Penny, um,
Um, first of all, thank you for, all, all for coming and thank you for all you do for the towns. That is absolutely amazing and this has really been a learning process for me. Obviously, you know, the fire department's always there and you count on it for being there, but you don't really think about what goes on behind the scenes and all the, you know, responsibility and the knowledge that's required. Um, I, I understand all your points, I probably still need some clarification, need to take it in a little bit more. And I think we all need to discuss it more and I would certainly be open to another meeting or some form of discussions.
I don't know if I want to meet you guys or not. There's hope, there's hope, because this is probably longest time I've been in a room and you guys didn't get buzzed out of here for some emergency and you wasted my time.
Ain't you one of them?
No, no, it's all, it's all seriousness, I, I completely appreciate where you are and, um, I, I guess I just want to give comments to kind of like what led us here today. Because I think there's a lot of, I don't know if it's confusion or not, but it's, I think it's important to understand the intentions. I know very well how this fire commission came about. Um, the point is it doesn't work, doesn't work in its current state. Um, it, it has appeared to me that it was always just make sure you get enough Stony Hill people, enough Bethel people, let all firemen in, then you could duke it out. And it's probably why you didn't get the, the equipment you needed. Because I think, you know, my vision in this has been right from the beginning, to find that right balance of an advisory commission, advisory, not a full-blown fire board where, and we're not there yet. We're not there yet, someday we have paid departments and paid, who knows? But the goal was to have something that was advisory nature, but would kind of be a, a blend of taxpayer, you know, people who aren't in the fire service, right? People that the fire companies would have to bring in the fold and teach them everything you guys do and what they, and then they're advocates, that's an important piece of this. But also have the experience of the fire department. An ex officio member from each department. And remember, every single fire commission, the chiefs are supposed to be there or deputy chief or whatever staff, right? So a lot of people in that room with fire experience. But that other piece of it is really, really important because the need for the board of selectmen, and, and for me, as the first selected, right? I have eighteen departments, it's not counting you guys. And when you look at your organization, what it means to the town, as, as Pat mentioned, it's, it's a huge part of what we do in town. It's, it's one of the most important things we do as a town is deliver emergency services, but all agree. The problem is, it's difficult for myself or the board of selectmen just to deal directly with you guys and not have, whether it's a paid admin or another paid chief or somebody reporting directly to us. It, it's, it's almost more difficult to, to departments to manage that. That's why we're looking for an advisory board, somebody who, who learns everything about what you do. From the taxpayer side, at fireman's side, and they give recommendations to the board of selectmen. That's why the middleman was important. And I know when this was created, it was all about the money part of it. Well, that's because it's capital intensive, what you do. And it does get very difficult for the three-member board of selectmen now to, to learn everything and then advocate for the board of finance. It's, it's much better if there is another taxpayer slash professional group. And that's all we're looking for, like whatever that looks like. We avoid it, elected, because a lot of people are going to run for office. And that is, that does get to the chief's point, closer to having a, like, the monstrosity fire board, which is more aligned with a large paid department. We're just looking for a way that we get the right advice and, and I'm just being honest, it can't be all fire. It has to have both. Because it's, it ends up just being everybody's kind of opinion and it's, it's no different than you going to the departments. Right, you, you need to kind of like translate that to somebody and make them your advocate. And just like the police commission is, I mean, that's kind of how it works. Chief sits in the room, works with the commission, they're all advocates for the PD. And they kind of, they're the middleman and talk about the budget and then give the recommendation to the board of selectmen. Because it's a lot of expertise. And we, we function very well in that in this town, meaning we have public site building, right? And those, we're looking for specific things there. We have sustainable Bethel, we're looking for specific groups there, right? We, we have these appointed commissions and they give us a lot of good advice. So I'm very open to having conversations. You know, the only thing that's just, I, I, as a guy, I say, I don't really feel like I'm getting the best advice from a complete board of firemen. We want some taxpayers in, you have one experience, you have representation, ex officio, chiefs in the room, right? But it's just not, not what we're doing now, because right now, to your point too, you've got current members or, or recent, past members, past, recent member, whatever. That is a challenge, right? Because those personalities and, uh, and looking at both departments, some things about picking winners and losers. And that's how we want to do it, we want to, we want to be, like, give them a resource as well as the middleman. And, and that's the only goal. How we get there together, I'm very open. I just wanted you to understand the intention and that came from a decent place. Because the current fire commission, I understand how it's created, but there's value in having it. And that's, and that's just one of my say, I'm very open if we have another meeting, because remember, it has, the board of selectmen still has to weigh in on this as well, once the charter vision pitch comes through, so, um, happy to talk to you guys about it. So that's kind of all I want to share.
It'd be an agreement in the next couple of weeks to sit down with Abbott.
Oh, yeah, I'm always, we're always talking about stuff like that. We'll go do one for Hunches or something and, but, but we really, whatever we come to as a group, I'm totally, I, I just, I just want really, I don't want to have really good advice that's given back to the board of selectmen and the board of finance. And remember, right now, you know, everybody looks at, it's just firemen, right? We, it's, it's nice to have two groups of people working together and we know we have taxpayer workers that are giving everybody great advice. And they'll be your advocates, I know that well. Your toys are cool, you know, and you get them out there and they see what you do. But like you were, that's the first thing you reach for, say, hey, come see what we do. Well, that's, that's what a fire commission is supposed to be. That's the goal, that helps. But yes, we'll get together.
So, alright, well, what I wanted to do, again, because we're at the end of our, our time and people are in the hallway ready to start the next meeting. Um, can we take a look at having another special meeting soon? And even if the fire commission issue isn't ready to be discussed, we have a lot of other things from the public hearing that we need to talk about. Um, and so I can, and I hope Mary, you're able to, to get in and see when rooms are available. Um, but let's start with the possibility of, um, Monday the twelfth?
Mondays are, uh, Tuesdays.
No, 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 this is for the commission. It's, it's our special meeting, you, you can attend.
And I'm not a child until Thursday.
Okay.
Yeah. Next week is.
Alright, and the week after that. I'm away, um, how about the twenty-seventh, that's after Memorial Day? Or the twenty-ninth, the Thursday, Tuesday or Thursday?
Tuesday is good, right?
Tuesday, 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 Pat?
I'll make it happen.
Tuesday, Tuesday, okay.
I'm going to speak for Alice and I'll leave the book groups meet on Thursday.
Okay, so Tuesday, the twenty-seventh. So can you take a look and see whether this room or another meeting room is open?
Yes, meeting room May.
Okay, meeting room May, twenty-seventh, it's seven o'clock, so we'll go back to seven.
So I have all the time you have.
Been here for hours.
And we'll probably use it and if, and hopefully with that pre-week timeframe, we'll have, we'll have that input. Okay? Anything else? Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
What time on twenty-seven?
Seven. In meeting room May here. And motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all of you for coming.